Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order, July 9th, 2018 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. First, I would like to ask you all to please silence any electronic devices that make If during the meeting, for some reason, an emergency should arise, please exit the room quickly and orderly. Make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. Should that exit be obstructed for some reason, please make a left-hand turn, then a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, we'd be happy to provide it to you. All you have to do is ask. Please do not use the elevators in case of an emergency. Thank you. At this time, I'll call on a good friend, Pastor Greg Morris, Parkway Church of God, for our invocation.
Thank you again for the opportunity to represent the community of faith, which is doing well. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you thankful for the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We are grateful that you are our benefactor, creator, divine revelator, that gives us wisdom, knowledge, guidance, in all that we do. We thank you for how you are blessing our community and blessing our city. We pray your favor upon these proceedings this evening, that you would continue our success, and for that, we will be eternally grateful. We ask this in the name of our dear Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. This time, please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So move a second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second it.
Second by Mr. Rudisil, first by Mrs. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
Good, thank you.
We have a very short consent agenda tonight, minutes, all from June 4th. We have the special meeting minutes, the work session minutes, and the closed session minutes. And that's it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. We have a... entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2850, please.
So move a second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President. And council members. I had to continue that. So it pleases me a great deal to be able to read this resolution tonight. I know that it's a bit unusual that the mayor would read the resolution. Typically, the city administrator would do this. Julia, I hope you don't mind my stealing your thunder for a moment. I have a resolution that I want to read here tonight, but I'm going to, immediately after that, invite a couple of guests and friends that we have in the room up to talk a little bit about why we are adopting, or why the city council is considering in adopting this resolution, and why the city of Salisbury is putting this forth. And we have a number of people in the room who are deeply engaged in this process. As many of you know, we are at, I think, one of what is, you know, what could be considered many pivotal moments that our nation, our world, have been in. And there are few things that are silver bullets for those challenges. And one of the things that I think many would argue is a quote-unquote "silver bullet" for the challenges that we face as a world, as a nation, and as a community, and even as an organization, are how we treat one another. It may not be everything, but it's certainly a beginning point. And the city of Salisbury is, and has been engaged in the last couple of years, in an effort, thanks to Ms. Grace Murdock, an effort to work on how we treat one another. And we've been engaged on a kindness journey, I'll call it, thanks to Grace's leadership. And that kindness journey has found its way into our schools in Wycomico County, and I say that being fully aware that we have members of our Board of Education in the room. It has found its way into our neighborhoods, and through random acts of kindness, we get it found its way into our businesses, and our retirement communities, our assisted living facilities, and elsewhere. So this resolution is a part of a broader process that the city of Salisbury has begun to walk through, a process that was created by World Kindness, World Kindness Organization and its subsidiary, World Kindness USA. And I'll invite soon Mr. Michael Lloyd White to come to the podium and talk a little bit about that, but first, I'm going to read the... if you don't mind, I'll read the resolution, and then we will pass the resolution around. This is Resolution Number 2850, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, for the purpose of declaring support for a kinder world for our children to inherit. Whereas the mayor and city council are constantly seeking ways to improve the Salisbury community, and have determined there is value in declaring ongoing support for international collaboration of all levels of government and its citizens to create kinder and peaceful societies for our children to ultimately inherit. And the city of Salisbury held its first Dance for Kindness in 2016, and the kindness climate has been expanding since then to include bike shares, marathons, youth centers, community gardens, kindness speeches, and several winners of kindness speeches right here in our community, and festivals, such that it is now time to make the city's kindness efforts official. And the city of Salisbury pledges ongoing support to World Kindness USA for its ambitious endeavors to encourage all of humanity, from classrooms to staff rooms and boardrooms, to those residing in the corridors of government, to seek kinder options in the resolution of all matters. And the city of Salisbury is undaunted by the challenges ahead, and is unshakable in its belief that a kinder world will be realized sooner than later in the lifetimes of its current elected officials and its citizens. The city of Salisbury hopes that its support for World Kindness USA will contribute to inspiring all levels of government, business, and communities in all nations to connect in the spirit of goodwill through finding the courage to be kind. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, with support from the mayor, in regular session on the ninth day of July 2018, that the city of Salisbury welcomes Chief Advisor to the Board of World Kindness USA, Michael Lloyd White of Australia, to our fair city, to witness the signing of this resolution of support for World Kindness USA, and all its endeavors to promote and establish kinder and more peaceful societies for future generations to inherit, which will enable the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to seek and attain the designation of a world kindness city. And with that, we have a much prettier resolution to sign than usual, and we are going to have each council member sign this, and the council president, vice president, and clerk to sign the smaller copy.
Make sure your pens work. Blue.
Blue. Blue. Just the blue.
Would you say now?
Just passing the blue down.
Hi.
Yeah. You need to vote. We need to vote.
Yeah, you need to vote.
Just to keep it official.
Yeah.
Otherwise, Mr. Tillman will rise out of his chair. All right. Any questions? We'll save the comments for later. Since there are no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 2850, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now we may pass.
So as that's making its way around, and then I'll sign it, and then I think we can do a picture with the resolution, I'd like to invite a couple people forward. So can I have Mr. Michael Lloyd White and Ms. Grace Murdock, please come forward?
Put it on here, don't you need it?
If you'll just stand here, I'll have Grace stand right over here, if you wouldn't mind.
Is sweating on there?
Yeah, please notice Ms. Murdock's wonderful National Folk Festival scarf. So tonight, as we... as the council passes and signs this resolution, as we sign it into effect, we are visited by the founder of the World Kindness Initiative, Michael Lloyd White, who has been in America for how many days now?
Been in Salisbury for less than 24.
Less than... in Salisbury, less than 24. And you were briefly in Annapolis before that?
I was in Annapolis for the funeral services over the weekend, but I've been here, I think, for a week.
Okay.
Traveling through.
Excellent. So I know you'll share more about the initiative and more about the World Kindness USA effort, and I know Grace can share more about our kindness efforts locally, but I want to do one other thing today. So I have taken it upon myself to create this certificate of appointment. This is an appointment appointing Grace Foxwell Murdock as Secretary of Kindness for the city of Salisbury. In recognition of her exemplary service in helping Salisbury become a world kindness city. The city of Salisbury compliments you, Ms. Murdock, on your single-mindedness in attaining your goal to spread kindness, and appreciates having you as an involved member of our community. So she made the effort to identify people, some of whom are in this room, as kindness ambassadors for our community, but, you know, nobody had acknowledged the fact that she's our kindness queen. So you are now our Secretary of Kindness.
Proud of Salisbury, is what I want to say. Proud of the citizenry. Proud of my mayor for taking up the cause when I needed people on my side to do this for Wycomico County and Salisbury. Really, it's never been about me, it's about us, and I just want a kinder space for us, and I want it to go out into everywhere that we reach. And it is. It is the time for kindness to be at the forefront, and we need to walk the walk, talk the talk, do it all. And Salisbury has done such a wonderful job with giving me support for my crazy ideas sometimes, and I'm so grateful, and there is more to come. So thank you so very much for this honor. Thank you. Yes, I'd love to introduce my Australian friend. Michael Lloyd White happened to land in Alexandria, Virginia, last June, and I found him on social media. I knew about world kindness because in my TEDx talk at the inaugural TEDx event in 2016, I referenced world kindness had begun in Korea in 1997. No, Japan. Japan, sorry. And that kind of launched me on a mission to see where else it was going. So fast forward to finding many kindness groups on social media, and I found Michael Lloyd White, who was then the General Secretary of World Kindness. And I reached out to him, I went to meet him in Alexandria, Virginia, and that's where my... when my efforts started truly for Salisbury to become a world kindness USA city. And he has been here for, as he said, less than 24 hours, and he does not disappoint when he talks about kindness. So I introduce you to my friend, Michael Lloyd White.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Grace. It's an honor to be here and share this special moment with you. Thank you, council members, and Mayor Day. This is significant. This is really significant. It goes without saying that we've hit a tipping point. And yes, I come from a land down under, but we have problems just the same. Ends up the same. Our country's known as the lucky country, yet in the lucky country, we've got children 12 years of age deciding that this world is too lonely, too cruel, and too unkind, and they decide to leave it. Now, if that's not an early warning sign, the canary in the cage telling us there's something wrong with our culture, and we don't get that, then we're not listening. I want to just be really clear on this. One of the challenges that I found in entering this space almost 10 years ago was the misconceptions of what kindness is. It's not about hearts and flowers, and sugar and spice, and all things nice. And I don't necessarily look like I'm going to be an advocate for kindness. Although I'm six foot two, I look like I used to play football, or a CEO of a company. I'm the last sort of person you would expect to be up here talking about kindness. Kindness has been mistaken for weakness too often. It's been mistaken for being gender-specific, and it's been removed from the agenda. You do a word search on any organization, even the ones with the best of intent for the words kindness, you'll get zero hits. You do a word search on the national curriculums of countries for the word kindness, you'll get zero hits. And you've got to ask why. Has kindness become that inconvenient? Now, for those that may have a question, and may think it's all warm and fluffy, and think we don't have time for it, I want you to think about this. We often talk about what a kinder world looks like, and that's an easy option to think about. We all know what a kinder world would look like. I want you to think about for a moment, what would a world look like with zero kindness? This is a world where there is no kindness in the community, therefore no community services, no first responders, no health care, no hospitals. This is a world where there is no kindness in a family. It is a world that has become all about self. Now, in this world, if you're unlucky enough to be born, how long do you think that child would survive? Because I can tell you now, it would be left on the slab. And that means that as a species, in a world without kindness, we would cease to exist. It's an essential element to our survival. And what you've just done today, and I take great pride in being able to repeat these words here, because I've spoken about this in many countries around the world. And just to be clear, it is not my movement. I didn't start this movement. It has a history that goes back to 1963, when a country that was a defeated nation, that was post-nuclear, post-war, was inviting back former wartime enemies to its shores to host its largest peacetime event in its history. Japan was hosting the 1964 Tokyo Games, and there was a problem. Their culture had changed. This once honorable and proud people, that respect and honor was right at the top of their agenda, found that Samaritans, good Samaritans, were being assaulted. Something had happened to their culture, and through their wisdom, they put kindness on their national agenda. They were the first country to do so, to welcome back to their shores former wartime enemies. And today, if you did not know your history, and you look at the relationship between the West and Japan, you couldn't possibly fathom that they were once mortal enemies. And if kindness was a part to play in that reconciliation, then it needs to be acknowledged, it needs to be spoken about, because it has tremendous power. And this declaration you've signed today, I remind those people that are skeptical about politicians signing declarations, I remind those people that think it's just a photo opportunity, it's just a moment on a busy agenda, I remind them about a young nation. A young nation that not that long ago signed a declaration, that declared that all men are created equal. Now, things didn't get better, things got a lot worse, but they eventually found its way into the laws of the land, and into the hearts and minds of a nation, for the most part. Still a work in progress, but something unexpected happened. Found its way across the ocean to a farm in South Africa, to a young man called Nelson, and into the streets in India to a law student called Gandhi, and to the streets of Chicago to the son of a preacher called Martin. And that declaration, that all men were created equal, ignited a spark in them to be agents for positive change, and adopt an unshakable belief that they would overcome, one man through peaceful protests would overcome the might of the British Empire's brutal injustices. That one man would sit in prison for 27 years with a ridiculous and unshakable belief that there would be an end to apartheid. And one man, who had a dream. Who were they? Who was Abraham Lincoln before he was Abraham Lincoln? Who was Martin Luther King before he was Martin Luther King? Or Nelson Mandela, or Gandhi? They were just people who had the courage of their convictions not to be bystanders, the courage to be kind. And you have to ask yourself today, who is Grace Foxwell Murdock? Who are you? This is the moment that you need to seize and drive it. This is the step where you begin. You're already on our radar, on the international movement's radar, and it's quite possible you will be the first city to be listed by meeting the KPA. I've seen what you do. I've been following you, and I'm super impressed. But here's the thing, leadership is temporary. You have good ideas, you have good policies, you have good programs, your successors will step in one day. And how do you know that they will continue? How do you know they don't want to leave their own legacy? The fact is that we all want to leave a legacy, we get that. At worst, they may ignore it, or rescind it, but if you embed it into your culture, it will influence leaders of tomorrow. It will influence them, so they're not going to be brought up in a world that is all about self. And this declaration, my hope is, will find its way to a classroom in Pakistan to a young girl called Malala. And there are people here in Salisbury that can inspire. And I want to thank you, Mayor Day. I want to thank you, council, for your time that you've granted today. I know I've probably gone and spoken over time, but I am incredibly grateful to know that my journey has brought me here. So thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the next few days.
I think I speak for all of us when I say, can you come back to every meeting? This is great. I could do this all night, and we could talk about this all night. And in fact, I think you're going to be at Hopper's after this, and you can go talk more about our kindness initiatives locally, globally. And tomorrow night, Acorn Market for dinner at?
Five to 6:30.
Five to 6:30.
Light appetizers, not dinner.
Light appetizers, but all are welcome. All at home are welcome as well. We do have one other thing that we want to do tonight. We have, you know, we're incredibly grateful for your visit, for you taking the time to be with us, and we want to leave you, we want to send you out of here, when you have to go, wearing Salisbury gear. So, and we know we're not the only city that you'll, will be graced by your visit, but we want to make sure you got plenty of Salisbury gear. So we've got a little gift for you.
Wow. Well, thank you.
Of course, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Now, can we get a picture with council and myself? Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
Let's do it.
Behind? Doesn't matter, whatever you prefer. Behind. Mono.
I'm the secretary.
Thank you.
Good to be here.
Thank you.
Good to be here.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you doing that, Harvey. Hold on. I need to water out of the way.
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Wonderful.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Wait a minute, my feet, my feet.
More than touched.
Thank you very much.
When do we dance?
I'm good for the dancing.
Very good.
The next.
You do say sharing.
Thank you.
I did a lot.
Woo-hoo! Jesus ain't standing there.
The public...
It was a first rate.
All right.
I was here.
I don't know how many people were watching that at home, but it wasn't enough.
But it'll show.
Yeah, and I think that if I might make a suggestion, that would be a great thing to post on the website for a while.
Absolutely.
And encourage everybody that's here, encourage 20 people to go, and encourage 20 people, etc. I think we'd be a lot better off, so. Okay, it's a hard act to follow. I'll entertain a motion now to approve the award of bids.
So move. Second it.
Okay, Mr. Irtin? No, I think I got it. And I'll give Ms. Jackson, because I thought I heard that first, so, okay. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. The first item this evening is the award of bid for Invitation to Bid A-09-18 Site Furnishings. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for an open-end, purchases-needed contract for the furnishing and delivery of various site furnishings standardized to city specifications. No minimum purchase was implied or guaranteed in the solicitation document. Thereby, the city reserves the right to decrease or increase quantities, and said modifications do not constitute a change order. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same prices, terms, and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of two vendors submitted bids by the due date and time of June 11th, 2018, at 2:30 PM. A bid tabulation sheet is provided for your reference, and additional details are noted in the department memo. Orders will be placed on an as-needed basis with the respective lowest responsive and responsible bidder per item. In FY '19, the city anticipates purchasing the site furnishings for both the city park and riverwalk with an estimated expenditure of $125,000. The city will also utilize this contract to purchase site furnishings for additional new installations as needed in various locations, such as city parks and playgrounds, and to replace worn and/or damaged fixtures throughout the city. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to award this contract to both Graeber Manufacturing from Wanakee, Wisconsin, and Playground Specialists from Thurmont, Maryland, with all subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. The Department of Procurement requests Council's approval to award this contract to both Graeber Manufacturing from Wanakee, Wisconsin, and Playground Specialists from Thurmont, Maryland, with all subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement.
Any questions or comments?
Okay. All right. The next item is the award of bid for invitation to bid ITB-A-08-18, that's the wastewater treatment facility polymer chemical supplier. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Waterworks to solicit bids for an annual supply and delivery of polymer for rotary drum thickener and sledge belt processing at the wastewater treatment plant. While the city has attempted to identify the estimated amounts of each bid item to cover its requirement, past experience shows that the amount ordered may be different than that submitted for bidding. No minimum purchase was implied or guaranteed. Thereby, the city reserves the right to decrease or increase the quantities acknowledged in the solicitation document, and said modifications do not constitute a change order. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same prices, terms, and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Waterworks to solicit bids for an open-end, purchases-needed contract for the annual supply and delivery of polymer for rotary drum thickener and sledge belt processing at the wastewater treatment plant. While the city has attempted to identify the estimated amounts of each bid item to cover its requirement, past experience shows that the amount ordered may be different than that submitted for bidding. No minimum purchase was implied or guaranteed. Thereby, the city reserves the right to decrease or increase the quantities acknowledged in the solicitation document, and said modifications do not constitute a change order. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same prices, terms, and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The bid process was a three-phase progression. Phases one and two consisted of jar tests and full-plant field test trials, which determine qualifications to bid in phase three. Bid documents submitted without completing phases one and two successfully were not accepted. Additional details about the results of phases one and two are noted in the department memo, which is attached. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of two vendors were determined to be qualified to submit bids by the due date and time of June 20, 2018, at 2:30 PM. You'll note, I did note the prices for each vendor and then for each item. Polydine Incorporated from Riceboro, Georgia submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid. As such, the Department of Procurement requests Council's approval to award contract A-08-18 to Polydine Incorporated, with all subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. There are sufficient funds budgeted in the noted account, which is the wastewater treatment plant chemical account, to issue a fiscal year 19PO for a projected 12-month supply of polymer in the amount of $108,146.
Any questions or comments? Kim? No? Okay.
Okay. All right. The next item is the award of bid for contract ITB or invitation to bid A-06-18, that's the pump station wet well cleaning. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Waterworks to solicit bids for an annual contract, which would furnish all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for wet well cleaning at both the North Side and South Side pump stations. As an annual contract, this contract included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same prices, terms, and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. One vendor, Chesapeake Environmental Services from Delmar, Maryland, submitted a bid by the due date and time of June 26, 2018, at 2:30 PM. Their total bid was $51,180 for a fiscal year. This bid submitted by Chesapeake Environmental was deemed to be responsive and responsible, and as such, the Department of Procurement hereby requests Council's approval to award this contract to said vendor, with all subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement.
Questions? I, I do have one, real quick one, past experience, just bear with me. Is it always, the skim cleaning is more expensive than the yearly clean?
Amanda? Do you have an idea? If you look at the department memo, that's actually quarterly, so we're getting three skim cleanings for that price? So, each, each one individually is about half the price of the, the annual major cleanout.
I knew you, I knew you'd have the answer, so.
Mr. President, can I also ask, Amanda, while you're up there, and I, the Council President knew I had a question on the last one and?
Can't go back?
I, I know.
No, that's all right, you can go back.
On the other one, it says that, and I guess it applies to this one as well, but the memo says that experience shows that the amount ordered might be different than that submitted for the bidding. There's nothing from previous years against, and to be honest with you, not really knowing much about the polymer for the rotary drum thickener, it's just really just a general question.
You hit the nail on the head right there. The rotary drum thickener is a brand-new process, so that just came online very recently, so we really don't have any historical data yet for how much that'll use. The, the belt filter presses we've had and have some idea, otherwise we're estimating for the rotary drum thing.
Awesome, appreciate it.
Sure. And just as a side note, even in future years, when we do annual contracts, we always suggest that quantities such as those are estimated, so that we do have some wiggle room to add or decrease as necessary.
Okay. Next item.
Okay. Next item is change order number five to RFP 04-11, that's the engineering services for the Fitzwater Street Lift Station. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number five in the amount of $14,800 for the noted solicitation. This original contract was awarded to George Miles and Bure in February 2011 for work to include a feasibility study, recommendation for proposed upgrades or replacement, preparation of construction drawings and specifications for bidding, project schedule, cost estimate, permit acquisitions, associated survey and stakeout, and finally, bidding and construction phase services. Change order number five is in response to the city's request to modify the current design of the gravity sewer replacement, which will include cast-in-place pipe lining technology research and design, and gravity sewer and CIPP construction plans. For change order number five, funds are available in the account noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement requests Council's approval to process this change order to George Miles and Bure in the amount of $14,800.
Amanda, can you come and explain all of that?
Thank you for the opportunity to explain this, and I do want to give a little history on why I've requested this change. As you know, this project's been in design for some time, we were ready to go out for bid, and we were taking the lessons learned from the soil contamination on Main Street and applying it to the specifications for this project, looking at our overall budget and looking at the contamination that we already had encountered and knew we would encounter on Fitzwater Street. And so, we decided to relook at not open-cutting the gravity sewer in all locations and trying to decide where we could avoid the soil contaminations, because honestly, that is a very expensive proposition. There's the soil itself, as well as the groundwater having to be treated. So, we spent some time with George Miles and Bure and really looked at what could we leave in place and line, what do we absolutely have to dig up and, and replace. So, this is, after spending some time with them, this is a proposal for them to redo the plan so we can put them out to bid and minimize the amount that we're in soil contamination. We also did some additional field testing just recently, in the last month, some additional borings in that area to really define where the soil contamination area is. So, ultimately, we're making this change to try to minimize our risk going forward in construction.
Is that the area right next to the old gas station?
It is, yes. And, and so that was, we're also trying to identify how far that went in both directions. And where the pump station's located will obviously be open-cutting there, and for about, I, I think about 500 feet east of that, we did need to upsize the sewer main, we will be open-cutting, but that was not the worst area, the worst area was further east.
Right. Does the mitigation have to go for approval?
You mean this, any groundwater mitigation? Yes, so we would get MDE permits for, for anything mitigation-related as well.
When do, when, when do we, I wouldn't even ask. Okay.
The construction project, I think it's worth mentioning, is, and this is all of Fitzwater, from the bridge to where we just finished.
Correct.
This is the pump station moving, this is rebuilding the pump station, this is doing, it's like a five-and-a-half million-dollar project, and, you know, the funds have, some of the funds have been there for 13 years, and then more were added in 2011. So, so, I mean, it's coming to a head, but this is a major project that can, is going to be disruptive no matter what, all of, to all of Fitzwater, but it could be a three-year, two-plus-year project, or it could be a one-year project.
So, this also would very much minimize the disruption, which is a good point. When, when we're doing lining, that's trenchless, so we're going from manhole to manhole. So, there's sections of the road now we will not have to dig up. We will still repave because that was in our project costs.
And have those cutouts and things.
Exactly. Yeah, so, so this, this hopefully minimizes our risk and cost and minimizes disruption.
But if I can tude Amanda Zorn, she saved everybody who uses Fitzwater, I think, a year of disruption time.
Yeah. I'm, I have no, I have no, I have no issue with Amanda's.
Not to, you know.
I, I have no issue, I have no issue with Amanda's timing, I am more concerned with MDE and their timing.
Well, we, we had gotten the plans approved, this is not a very substantial change, I, I think they would welcome this change as well, so.
So, they've already seen and approved the initial?
They've already seen the pump station, the gravity sewer, they have not reviewed this new slipline portion, but it's not a real substantial change. So, I'm, I'm not very concerned.
I feel better, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions?
One more.
Okay.
One more. One more. This is also a change order. Change order number one to invitation to bid A-101-18, that's the CDBG Neighborhood Sidewalk Construction. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number one in the amount of $8,724.55 for the noted solicitation. This change order would provide for more sidewalks, ADA ramps, and frontage infill where needed. Funds are available in the HCDD project, HCDD, yes, project account noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement requests Council's approval to process change order number one as noted above to Barker's Landing Excavation in the amount of $8,724.55.
Any questions? All right, if there's no more questions, I will now call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2491 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin. Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury for the closing of a portion of South Division Street at Center Street, South Division Street at Washington Street, and a portion of Mitchell Street at South Salisbury Boulevard, whereas the Salisbury Charter SC 11-2 gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas the closure, closure of the aforementioned portions of South Division Street are being requested by the Department of Infrastructure and Development to improve safe, traffic safety on South Salisbury Boulevard by diverting traffic to a signal-controlled intersection at East Vine Street, and whereas the closure of this portion of Mitchell Street is being requested by the Department of Infrastructure and Development to improve traffic safety on South Salisbury Boulevard by diverting traffic to a signal-controlled intersection at Vine Street, or the stop-controlled intersection at Newton Street, and whereas the Maryland State Highway Administration supports the City of Salisbury in closing access to South Division Street from South Salisbury Boulevard and to Mitchell Street from South Salisbury Boulevard as shown in Exhibit A. And whereas the Maryland State Highway Administration will install curb and sidewalk on both sides of South Salisbury Boulevard at South Division Street and at Mitchell Street, and whereas the City of Salisbury will install curb and sidewalk at South Division Street between Center City and South Salisbury Boulevard and South Division Street at the intersection of Cross Street and Washington Street, and whereas the City of Salisbury will install bolters behind the sidewalk at the intersection of Mitchell Street and South Salisbury Boulevard, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the aforementioned sections of South Division Street and Mitchell Street are hereby closed to vehicular traffic. This will take effect upon passage.
Any questions or comments? Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2491 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2493 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtin, Mr. Tillman.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2018 general fund budget to appropriate the funds returned on contract, whereas the police department requires police officer recruits to enter into a prorated five-year contract prior to employment, whereas a police officer who did not meet the conditions of the contract reimbursed the City of Salisbury a prorated amount of $5,860. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department requests these funds be placed in our police services equipment account 21021-546012 in order to purchase new flag poles for the front of the police department, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2018 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows with an increase in general fund revenue 01000-456911 by $5,860 and an increase in the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2493 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2494 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance by the mayor and council, the City of Salisbury, to amend the Salisbury Municipal Code by adding paragraph D to section 10.32.030 motor trucks and commercial vehicles to establish fines for violations of the overnight commercial parking limit in the code, whereas the code currently limits overnight commercial parking in residential areas, and whereas there are no penalties in the code for violating said limits, and whereas the problems continue with commercial vehicles parking overnight in residential areas, and whereas the city and police chief desire to enforce these limits by issuing a fine to any person violating this section of the code, and whereas the City of Salisbury desires to enforce the limits for overnight commercial parking in residential areas to maintain the peace of the residential sections of the city, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, the chapter 10.32 stopping, standing, and parking of the City Salisbury Code is amended by the addition of paragraph D to subsection 10.32.030 as follows. That entire section of the code is included, but subsection D is the only addition, and it's entitled penalty. Any person found to be in violation of this section shall be subject to a citation, and upon conviction thereof, before the court having jurisdiction, shall be subject to a fine of $500 for the first violation. Each day a violation remains uncorrected is a separate violation, subject to an additional citation and fine. Subsequent violations within the same calendar year shall be subject to the additional citations and increasing fines as follows in the chart provides for a $600 second offense, $700 for the third, $800 for the fourth, $900 for the fifth, and $1,000 for the sixth and subsequent offenses.
Any questions? Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2494 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2495 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtin, Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance that's been mandated by the Maryland Department of the Environment, and in order for us to comply, we have to pass this ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, amending chapter 13 Public Services of the Salisbury Municipal Code by adding chapter 13.32 illicit discharges to add provisions related to prohibited discharges and illicit connections into the municipal separate storm sewer system, and for enforcement to establish compliance with those regulations, whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency through 40 CFR Part 122 has revised the regulations governing regulated small municipal separate storm sewer systems, and whereas the City of Salisbury is a regulated small municipal, municipal separate storm sewer system through a general permit issued by the Maryland Department of the Environment, and whereas the general permit for discharges from small municipal separate storm sewer systems identifies the minimum control measures for implementation to achieve permit compliance, and whereas illicit discharge detection and elimination is one of the six minimum control measures defined in the general permit, and whereas the general permit requires that regulated municipalities adopt an ordinance that prohibits illicit discharges into the storm system, storm sewer system, and establish legal means for gaining access to private property to investigate and eliminate illicit storm drainage system discharges, and whereas the City of Salisbury- illicit storm drain system discharges, and whereas the City of Salisbury recognizes the necessity to regulate the contribution of illicit discharges and pollutants to the municipal separate storm system, and whereas the city desires to prevent non-storm water discharges generated as a result of spills, inappropriate connections, dumping or disposal to the municipal separate storm sewer system, and whereas the city council, the City of Salisbury, desires to amend chapter 13 to add definitions related to the municipal separate storm sewer system and illicit discharges and to establish legal authority to carry out all inspection, monitoring, and enforcement procedures necessary to ensure compliance with this chapter and compliance with the revised EPA regulations, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, the chapter 13 be amended by the addition of section 13.32, which I presume you do not want me to read the entire thing.
No.
Okay.
I think we can...
Basically, just for the, after the definitions there, I think that 13.32.030 would be most instructive to the public.
Right.
That's the specific prohibitions and requirements in this section do not include all the discharges prohibited, but are provided to address specific discharges that are frequently found or known to occur. No person shall release or allow to be released any of the following substances into the municipal separate storm sewer system: any new or used petroleum product, any industrial waste, any hazardous substance or hazardous waste, including household hazardous waste, any domestic sewage or septic tank waste, grease trap or grease interceptor waste, holding tank waste, waste oil bins or grit trap waste, any garbage, rubbish, or other waste, any new or used paints, including latex-based paints, oil-based paints, stains, varnish, and primers, as well as cleaning solvents and other associated products, any yard waste that may be moved or gathered by a person, any wastewater that contains soap, detergent, degreaser solvent, or surface, wait a minute, surfactant?
Surfactant.
Okay.
You got it.
Surfactant, that's a new one to me. Surfactant-based cleaner from a commercial motor vehicle wash facility, from any vehicle washing, cleaning, or maintenance at any new or used motor vehicle dealership, rental agency, body shop, repair shop, or maintenance facility, or from any washing, cleaning, or maintenance of any business or commercial or public service vehicle, including a truck, bus, or heavy equipment, any wastewater from a commercial mobile power washer and from the washing or other cleaning of a building exterior that contains soap, detergent, degreaser solvent, or any surfactant-based cleaner, any wastewater from commercial floor, rug, or carpet cleaning. Shall I go on?
Do you think it's necessary? It's not necessary to go through it all?
I mean, it's there, it's on the website.
Don't put anything down the sewer.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I did have a question about this.
Go right ahead.
This is gonna get fun now.
Why do you say that? Because my question, how are we responding to the power washing of homes? Because, you know, when they come in to do big complexes, that's gonna be a lot of water going into drains, you know what it seem like?
Sure. So for power washing of homes, it's certainly fine for it to go over a grass surface and get absorbed in the grass. For kind of mobile power washers, or if it's going right into a parking lot, you can put an absorbent boom down around the inlet to collect essentially the soap, and the water would go through. So that's really how we're gonna encourage and start a, kind of a public campaign to let people know, you know, you can collect the soap out of what you're power washing and then still be a legal operation. But where you can direct it to grass surfaces, that's the best thing to do, but otherwise we'll try to keep the soap products from going down the drain.
Then who will be liable? Would it be the company that does the power washing, or the people that own the property?
It's the company that does the power washing. So that's really who we're gonna be reaching out to first, is the mobile car wash companies, mobile power wash companies. MDE actually has some good guidance documents for that as well, so we'll be able to use that. And again, this, there's enforcement actions, but a lot of it is just education. You know, we're not looking to go out and start finding people, we'll educate them and talk about what are better practices.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good question.
I think also to point out, they put together a nice fact sheet to share, so I think that's something will be shared to educate people as well.
And that is on our website right now, the fact sheet that's in your package is in the Infrastructure and Development part of the website.
Great. Thank you, Amanda. Any other questions? Bearing now I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2495 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Do we have any requests for public comment?
No.
We don't. Before we, before we, I got you. Before we go, I have, I have liked to recognize the president of the Board of Education, Don Fitzgerald. Don, good to see you.
Good to be here.
Thank you. And Senator Jim Mathias, our senator.
Mr. President.
Please do.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. President, members of the council, proud to be here today. I'm sorry I'm a bit late. I have a proclamation for the kinder world, proclamation that you were going to sign, and I'd like to read it, but first of all, I want to thank you for the good work that you do. I know when the mayor's here tonight, and the former mayor that just left, I was at, I think, both of their swearing-ins at different times, and as I congratulated them, Mr. President, I asked them just to take a look at me, and I asked them to look at me again, and then I suggested that that night when they go home, they look at the mayor and look at themselves, and I said, "I used to look like that." And this is what a life commitment to public service is. And I'm grateful to be in the company of my colleagues, and I'm grateful for somebody who calls Eastern Shore home, and Salisbury clearly a center for where I came for so many things throughout my years. I'm proud to be here tonight, and I can't imagine more fitting time, respectful, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the council, to be here and signing and presenting a proclamation for a kinder world. And I know that it's within our ability to do that. Clearly, I know it's within our ability to do that. At some point, even the most extreme conflicts in this world have had détente, where we can take that time of cooling off, or whatever it is, to start to realize our purpose for being. And clearly, our purpose for being is to make this world a better place, in one neighborhood, one community, one region, one state at a time. So I thank you for affording me this privilege. And, Mr. Mayor, can I present this to you? Mr. President, if you would like, I'm not sure how the protocols are here, or how you would like me to do it.
The mayor will, he'll make sure I get it.
Okay. So I bet, before I do this, tell us about the kinder world. I will. Maybe so.
Let me just share. So first of all, let me just do two things really quick. You don't know this, but you were, your name came up in conversation today. I was at Starbucks briefly with Ms. Glanz, I'm just gonna put it all out there, after our all-staff meeting this morning, and a woman came up and said, you know, "Do you remember me?" And I said, "I'm sorry, help me out." And she said, "Well, you know, you saw me, I was riding the ambulance, I'm a paramedic with Hebron." And I was riding the ambulance, and I teach here at SU, and she was, and she said, "You know, back in the day, I was a firefighter, paramedic with the town of Ocean City." And I ran into her last week when I was working alongside our firefighters, I was doing a ride-along for the day on the engine, and we had a cardiac arrest on Brick Killen Road right by the dump. And she said, "Well, I used to ride and work for the town of Ocean City, and the mayor then used to ride too, only he wasn't just doing it every now and then, he was a member of the department, he was a firefighter." And she said, "Mr. Jim used to drive that engine, and he would, you know, he would look down on, you know, the city from above," and she said how proud it used to make her that her mayor, Mayor Jim, used to ride with her. So you don't know that, but you, you know, you've touched a lot of lives.
Thank you, I'm grateful for the...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir. Absolutely. So we, City of Salisbury is on its way to becoming the first world kindness city in America, and there are a couple of key performance indicators that we are working on accomplishing, and one of them was the unanimous consent of the council to becoming a, working on becoming a kinder city. That being said, a lot of the things that we need to do to become a world kindness city have been achieved by Ms. Grace Murdoch. And Grace, through her Buddy Bench program, through her kindness bracelets, through the Random Acts of Kindness efforts, and through the designation of a variety of leaders in the Board of Education and around our community as ambassadors for kindness, we have, we have set ourselves apart from other cities on this path. Interestingly, the city in America that is second on the pathway, and there are about nine that are really far along, Los Angeles is one, Philadelphia, number two is Annapolis. So you got two Maryland cities in the running to be number one to get there, but we're pretty far out front, so. That's the goal, that's the objective, and not to be unkind to our friends in Annapolis, but, you know, we're really proud of our efforts here, and especially of Grace's efforts. And we're really grateful to see leadership from the Senate and leadership from our state right here.
Maybe we can get her on the flags, or everybody, can you, this is a team effort, right? Let's get your team effort. And, see that, we won't see I got shorts on. This is the summer attire, there she sit there.
I think we gotta...
If you'll, your hands on the man, that's... That's good, that's good. Would you be kind enough to do on my camera while we're, please? And I would be remiss if I did not thank you both for your commitment to, I think, the number-one effort in a more rational, kind world, and that's our education for our children. And God bless you.
One, two, three. I'll do a selfie real quick.
Can I do Facebook Live on? Listen, hold on. God bless you, man. You're welcome. I'm down on it. Thank you, man. God bless you.
God bless you as well.
All right? And for my late wife, who was a city clerk, to you, I know, I know what you do, God bless you. Thank you, I'm proud to be behind here, and I know the effort it takes, the commitment to the community to be here. Mr. President, thank you. God bless you, man. Thank you. Mayor? Thank you. All right, thanks for your service, very kind of you, brother. Julia, there I am. God bless you. Thank you. I want to fade away some. I appreciate it. Live tonight. Your National Folk Festival. We're gonna fade out as quickly as we can. Thank you. Thank you, my dear. Thank you, man. God bless you, thank you. Good night. Thank you. And not a hand went unshaked before he left the room, so.
He missed Keith. Oh, don't tell him. All right, since there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.